It is three o'clock on the dot and I'm seeing majority of our board meeting, board members. So we'll go ahead and get started. Board members, thank you for, for being here today and, and staff. I will start our meeting out by going through our board norms and then we will do roll call from there, Ms. Smith. So as a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. To never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of, the beginning of each meeting. And at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. To continually self-check to determine if we are following board norms when conducting district business. As you can see, Mr. Lopez is not here. He said he may log in, but he is not here today. So with that, Ms. Smith, can you please do roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you for that. Next up on our agenda is board discussion. So we are picking up. Approval of the agenda. Thank you. Next up, we need to approve the agenda.
So move.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you so much. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. You're on mute, Ms. Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now next up is board discussion. So where we are picking back up on our budget conversation. Dr. Stubblefield, I'm not sure where you want to pick up with this.
Um, so in our last meeting, first I'll say that although it says Greg on the screen, it is actually Terry Sabley. Terry, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Greg is actually flying in as we speak. So Terry is here on Greg's behalf, just in case our board members have any questions to direct for legal or clarification. But.
Good afternoon, and I'll do my poor best to sit in for Greg today.
Thank you, Terry. Um, so at our last meeting, we finished up going through each of the elementaries. Uh, building needs assessments that they had submitted and also looking at their requests. Since then, um, myself and, um, other administrators here at district office, we did have our, um, principals meeting and what I was able to share with them, the three questions that the board will be required to answer and approve. They will be answering those questions and we gave them until the 16th because a lot of the information is just pulling from their, um, building needs assessment. And what we'll do is put that in one document so that you have all of them all on one document with each school and their response. We are still getting guidance from KSTE and some other partners around the third questions with barriers. So with that, um, we'll put the information in together. We'll bring it to the board and say, here's our response and recommendation. But the board does have the right to, um, enter the, how long it will take in whatever way that you all would choose. If, because it says board, I'm just saying, we'll give, here's what we believe the answer to be. But you do, you will have an opportunity to give input and, um, answer or ask any questions about what, um, the response from the building principal and their leadership team. And our recommendation from, um, the district level administration. So I just wanted to give an update on that before we jump into the middle and high school staffing, building needs assessment and their, um, request around that. But the next time we have a budget meeting, I believe on the 30th, we'll have all of that information pulled together. We'll get it to the board prior to the 30th so that you will have the building needs assess, all the building needs assessment, the information we're sharing today, and then those questions that are required after, um, July 1st. So that during the month of July, anything that we need to follow up on and provide clarity around, we'll have the opportunity to do that.
Well, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So help me understand, will you use the form we already have and just extend the columns? Are you going to use the example that KSTE provided you in the packet? Are you going to make a, create a new one?
We will use the form that we already have. And then we will also provide to the board a one pager with those specific questions on them. So we're planning to have the form we already have and then have an attachment to that. So that, um, the board will have it in one place, um, when you're looking at it at school by school. So you'll have two documents.
Okay. So you're now going to have your, um, staff requirements and then these three, these three columns will be on a separate sheet, building by building?
Yes. It will be on one sheet with all of the buildings.
Collectively or individually?
Collective, every, similar to this sheet right here.
The sheet that they gave us, that KSTE gave you is building by building. So you're saying you're not using that?
We're not. K, KSTE actually used ours as the model. What we will, let me find what I'm sharing. So this sheet, similar to this, we'll put it on one sheet with the three questions and then have this sheet as in, so we'll have two documents, like this one and that one. We could put it on this. I'll go back and with those who put it together and see what logically makes sense. But right, for sure, we'll have them all to present to the board on one sheet like this. So that you have easy access to it. And then it's not an issue for us to drop it in this sheet as well, but we were just trying to make it easy use for people to see the three questions. Yeah.
Right. Whichever way you go, if I, if what, let's say you have Argentine there. Whichever of the two documents, the board members would be able to read the enrollment. They'll be able to flip back if they have to the other to see the state assessments. Perhaps by then we'll have the updated state assessments and then on one of these sheets, you will be able to see the barriers, the budget allocation, excuse me, and the time for Argentine?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that's necessary. That's what the law requires. Thank you very much.
Yeah. But we, I just want to clarify, we will not have the updated state assessments because that typically doesn't get finalized until the fall. We have the preliminary information, but that typically doesn't get finalized until fall, which is, so you always have the previous year's state assessments for this. And we are, what, um, we, if it's not already done, what we're doing within, on this sheet, the building needs assessment sheet is where it asks for the data. We're dropping the building report card there so it's consistent for everyone. Um, and you don't have a situation where you may have some identifiable data or a Google link that may not work. Or that's not been updated or goes away. So we'll just, um, link it to the school's building report card because that's where the data is pulled from.
Right. And in, in the, um, KSD document, that, is that referenced as the accountability report?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Because I think one or two of those did have, and I'm not sure if it was in Argentine, did have identifiable material.
Yeah. Yeah, it may have been. Some of them did because it was an internal document, but we're going back and clean it up before we make it public.
Great.
Yeah.
And then last question, thank you. Then what do you, do you plan to put the needs assessment with the, I could, help me understand, what then goes on the school's website? And then are they, are they going on just a district website by school or on the school web, website?
They will, they will go on the school's website. On the district website, we all have, um, like somewhere where we just redirect them to the school website. So instead of housing them all on the district side, we'll have a statement saying the building needs assessments and the questions can be found on the school website. And have whatever the link is to the school website or where they can find it on their school website.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, Argentine is first up. Here is their, um, cap scores. You can see them. They're similar, um, to several of our elementaries, the range of how many students are proficient at the different levels. It shows you they are between 73% at sixth grade to 98% who are not proficient. Did not meet the proficiency and that's scoring above a three, three and a ball. Somebody's not needed. Um, and then what Argentine requested, and I just want to remind everyone what's approved and requested, it could, these things could be a continuation from previous years and, um, not necessarily new positions, but they have six, um, additional teachers for core content and two encore. And then they also asked for two instructional aides regarding covering lunchroom and then a social worker. And they didn't have a librarian. So they were working through that, but that is what Argentine felt was needed. In addition to the baseline information that we said were at all of the middle schools, that was on the other document. Arrowhead, now I gotta search because it's not, if someone sees it before I get to it, you can tell.
The right-hand column, far, excuse me, far left column. Down. Keep going. There you go.
Is that the very bottom? Um, Arrowhead, um, they had 84%, they combined all their grade levels and some of them did it differently and some of them looked at it by grade level. And then, um, 84 and 91%, they, okay, here, yeah. They, um, requested three additional teachers and instructional aide. I mean, this is what they have. Here's what they, um, asked in the needs assessment. That is maybe was met, one instructional aide for PE. This was previously approved and gave this up to get a second PE teacher for this current school year. So that is what their allocation were. And then Carl B. Bruce.
Dr. Stubblefield.
Yes.
Well, this person, it, it said there that they would be covering the restrooms. So I'm assuming they're not going to teach a full load. Part of their time is covering restrooms and the other part they're teaching.
Where, where, no, that, no, they were, I think at one time they could have been asking about like, if you had two female PE teachers, they weren't necessarily available to, you know, do the sweeps in the restroom, but these are full-time positions. It's not like that. That, some of these notes are just that notes that as, um, those who are in a meeting were just taking it down. But no, they're full-time teachers.
Okay. I, I just saw that there. I just, for clarity, I didn't know if they were going to be doing something else.
No, that was just saying if it were possible for it to be, um, somebody who can cover the male restrooms. And then Carl B. Bruce, 10% of students at level four, so 90%, 90 at level four on the cap for math and 10% of this, this is, we probably need to clean that up. Because I don't know, I can look at their cap assessments. If somebody else is on here, we do have a folder with the cap assessments. There's need to be, I think the way that it was answered, um, he was answering it in the inverse of this folder is empty. Does anybody know what, um, Carl B. Bruce's cap assessments were?
Dr. Stubblefield?
Yes.
You go up, she listed it, um, instead of percentage on line 17. She listed the actual number of students that did not, instead of a percentage.
Okay. Okay. So I should just do the math and convert it. But there you go. So it's, it's in the upper 90s when you see that. I was looking down at the other one.
Does, does that mean 10 out of 951 or a level four?
10, that's her goal. Yeah, that's her goal. So it was 30 out of 951 that did meet, 921 students were not proficient.
Okay.
944, she did numbers instead of position and I looked at it wrong. So I'm sorry about that. And what they requested was, um, six teach, what they, here's their, uh, what they received. Six teachers, an instructional aide, a halftime tutor, an instructional aide slash tutor and a translator.
So I guess my question is, uh, I don't remember the exact number of students that are altered by or that are impacted by the boundary change. Does that change some of this information and give some to Central?
No, it wasn't that, the number of students that was leaving would not impact what her, um, allocation was. Because it was a small number, um, in the big scheme of things. It didn't make, and then Central, we would make sure that they had the staffing to, um, support the shifts or they already probably did have the capacity in their staffing based off of the allocations. But we'll go back and confirm that, but it wouldn't reduce the number for Carl B. Bruce.
Okay. And can you, and can you also do the same for the elementary schools? That confirmed that those shifts do not cause any or need for change in any of these allocations as well?
They, so these allocations, it would not, when you look at the different sections. So like every year in September, we look at where students actually show up because our, uh, population is so transient. And we either shift FTE and move teachers or add additional FTE if, um, the capacity at whatever school, um, is met. But we have to do that unfortunately every fall because kids may end up in a different spot than what, where they were at the beginning of the year. So that is outside of this, um, process because we just have to send the staff where kids are. So it's a part of our natural process to look at where the kids are and where staffing needs are.
Well, Dr. Stubblefield, could I follow up with a hypothetical question following Ms. Russell's thought process? And it may not be correct. Are we prepared or we, and we've never done it, seven years I've been on here, it's never been publicly done. Are we prepared to make budget adjustments if, say, when, when is the first, if, when is assessments given in the fall?
The assessment, the cap assessment or?
Any assessment, practice or whatever?
Oh, the first fast bridge assessment typically occurs sometime in September.
Okay. So come October, if, if you, the staff feel that there are some serious deficiencies, and, and it's not from boundary changes or overcrowding or whatever, but are we prepared? Are we even anticipating making some budget adjustments and shifting resources? You know, we've never, 500 is never done in my seven years. But anticipating a more data-driven decision-making process, is that something we've ever thought about? Are you, are you discussing with your staff? That's, I don't know, Ms. Russell, if that's what you meant, but that's where my, my brain went when you said what you said. So it's not for, you can respond or whatever. That's my question, Dr. Stubblefield.
So when we are looking at that as far as, um, allocations of resources, it, I mean, we could evaluate whether it means additional staff or a different type of resource. When it comes to staff, it will definitely, we just have to follow for those who are covered under the negotiated agreement, what it says about moving staff, um, at that time. But we have, maybe not publicly, we have shifted staff, um, outside, I mean, throughout the year. Typically, we try to do it at the end of a quarter or semester. So as least disruptive to the students who are impacted, if they have direct kids tied to them. But if they are more, um, flexible and that kind of thing, we just follow what's in the master agreement. But is, that's been done, I mean, this year when I was here and I was, every district I've been in is usually done at the end of a quarter or semester.
Right. Now speaking for resources.
Resources, we would, uh, one, want to be reflective and make sure that whatever is being done is done with fidelity. So, um, if it's meaning getting additional resources, we would look at what that is and take it through that process. And if it requires board approval, like if it's more than $20,000, we would bring it to board approval, for board approval. But if it's just, um, like a supplemental, something that somebody needs that we have evaluated and think it would be beneficial, then we would put it in place. And those kinds of things currently happen. As we're looking at, as staff and teachers evaluate and with the district support, evaluate what has been taught and what, where there may be gaps.
Well, then I guess maybe there just needs to be more, more transparency. Um, and again, that's where my mind went, that I don't believe that we have the luxury of, of, and when you say fidelity, one would assume everything's done with fidelity. And if it's not, then it, there's, it's a goal too. But, um, just, thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing this 10% increase every time we take fast bridge. Is that like a internal goal because everyone is saying 10% on those assessments? Or is that a standard? Are, are people meeting that 10% in, increase? I guess I would have to compare data from year to year. I guess that's where I keep getting caught up in, like, what are your target goals regarding to the percentage? And I keep seeing 10% show up.
So I think 10% is internally, um, a standard, but is also realistic around when you look at best practices and see when you're implementing stuff and how students move and really, um, being realistic about digging down to see what the root cause is. So I think it's a goal that's, uh, realistic. And as my understanding is prior to the pandemic, that schools were starting to see that, those incremental increases around the data. So that's where that comes from. If you look at most districts, you probably will see somewhere around the 10% because that's just based off research and experience of what is realistic when you're trying to move, um, kids and the various components. And it doesn't mean some, you won't have greater gains in some areas or some more kids won't do it. But that's just more of the average and what's realistic. So Central requested three class size reduction teachers, two encore teachers and MTSS intervention coordinator. So, um, with that, Ms. Russell, to your original question, by adding this, and if we need, if their numbers were to grow and they need additional staff, we were allocated, but they have space for growth, which is why the students, um, the number that was selected for the, the impact, it was looking at how much space do they have to grow so that they won't, when you look at FTE and capacity, won't be over capacity. And the next one is Eisenhower. So Eisenhower, similar to, um, Carl B. Bruce put the raw number, so that's not actually accurate because we're now, oh, six, they say 661, which they could have been larger the year before. So, but that number is bigger than their total number of enrollment. So we'll go back and look at it because they may have had the number from the previous years in 663. So their enrollment either dropped or the numbers are reversed, um, but we'll confirm. But based off of that, Eisenhower requested or will receive, uh, six additional teachers. They wanted to keep their current staff and an additional counselor. But I do believe there are no, their enrollment decline, which is probably why they were saying they need their current teachers. So that, um, with the decline, they wouldn't lose staff. So that's what is, was allocated to them. Gloria Willis. So they have 747, um, and 90% did not, um, score above level two in, um, ELA and 96% at math. And their request was three additional teachers, a social worker, um, MTSS, um, a recovery will monitor, a translator and instructional aide. That was the last middle school. Um, we can jump to the high schools and Harmon is up first.
How many MTSS individuals do we have in actual buildings?
I don't, I don't think we have, but, and this is where I may have to rely on some who were here before me. I think this is the first year that some of them are asking for MTSS coordinator because we just started to implement the MTSS.
I know Eisenhower has one, but I am not familiar and just wonder what, what kind of our baseline for ensuring every school has one, if it, because I'm hearing that the return on investment is high. Um, as that's something we've adopted, but I don't see that in the request here. However, if that is the practice in which we're, we're going as a district, then I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't have one in all of. then I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't have one in all of those middle school buildings at least. So Kristin, sorry, I saw you about to talk, sorry.
There are currently two MTSS facilitators at the middle school level, Central and Eisenhower.
So I will share this, Rachel, we don't have enough data to say this is something that we would implement at every building. So that's why where it's been allocated at, one of the things that we don't have in place, which I think over the next couple of years, we need to collect the data to see if we're really getting our return on investment. Because, I mean, when we look at the progress of those students compared in whatever data points, we don't have that systematically in place. So this year would have been the baseline year. And then I think over the next, the course of the next year or so, we will be able to say, yep, this is worth the money to input it in all the buildings and we need to build it in whatever budget. Before we just jump to every building to have it.
Well, I guess I wasn't saying that every building should have it. I was just saying amongst middles. I guess I'm kind of that thinking that like all of the middle schools would have all the same supplements so that there isn't this huge difference between what's available at one middle school versus another. And I understand that the audience of students is different per school. But I also know that MTSS dollars will also expire after ESAR the third round. And so how will we be able to tell that from a pool of students if we're only pulling the cluster from a couple of buildings that are drastically different versus looking at the entire middle school arena as a whole? But I, I hear what you're saying. I just wanted to understand a little bit more.
Yeah, and so Eisenhower and Central are two different populations of student and that data we would be able to, you know, that, that data will give us information. Because if it is working, that's something that we would want to build into the general budget and not, oh, now that the ESAR dollars are gone away, it has to go. So we would have to have the larger conversation of, is this return on investment greater than something else in order for us to keep it? Some other buildings have asked for and do different things. Some buildings use their instructional coaches in a different manner around that student center, student-focused coaching, and that is embedded in the MTSS process. And they have others who are doing the same things. It's just not that it's tied to one particular person or position, and they're building it more in a systematic way. So those are the data points that we would have to look at and consider. But I hear what you're saying, but that was just based off some buildings, they just, their systems of while we, they have some common stuff, how they leverage their systems and the staff to implement some of those things look a little different. And honestly, that's where we're collecting and that's what we need to have some systems in place to evaluate that. So that we don't get in a habit of having people to do things in isolation because truly MTSS should be the responsibility of all adults involved with students and focusing on that and all of adults should be looking at the data. So I don't have enough information to say how they are using it or not using it. And that's over, I mean, we'll collect the data, we'll see the performance between the different schools this year and the kids who are tied to it and to see if that return on investment is something that we should be looking at for all of our middle schools or at the different levels. So Harmon has thirteen hundred students. And at the high school level, it's a little different around who's taking the cap assessment because I think they only, and somebody can chime in, think these sophomores are the only ones to take a cap assessment or sophomores and juniors. Does somebody want to chime in and tell me if I'm right or wrong about that? And they didn't list their percentages, they just linked their report card. I hear somebody coming on.
Yeah, Dr. Stubblefield, that's freshmen through juniors for the cap assessment.
At the high school, what do freshmen? So here's I hear someone.
Yeah.
Did some feedback somewhere, but I hear some. So the math. I'm sorry, was someone saying something? Yeah, like, I believe it's only sophomores who take the math assessment. It says grade nine to twelve, but I believe it's given their sophomore year, but I will confirm that, like, everybody.
I'm confirming, Dr. Stubblefield, but shoot, I think the feedback is coming from my end for some reason, somebody is saying that, so sorry.
Okay. So she'll, and then that'll apply to all of them, she'll let us know. But what they, here was their need assessment, assessment ask, and here were the things, some of these things they received in a previous year, but they received two title replacement teachers, seven instructional aides, and a recovery room monitor and an intervention teacher for MTSS sit coordinator data.
Dr. Stubblefield, so that is tenth grade ELA and math and eleventh grade for science.
Okay, so those are the only students that take it at the high school level. So when you look at the high school numbers, it is referring to that level, freshmen and seniors don't take any cap assessments.
You know, Dr. Stubblefield, listening to your previous comment, am I to think that perhaps at this time next year? We could have a, a more global under, specific understanding of, you know, what, what is occurring at each school? I mean, appreciate the presentation Dr. Campbell gave about what was where, essentially. Are you saying it's going to take this year for you to kind of, you know, you say some has a system here, some don't have a system there. And it, for me, is a challenge because our students are so transient that they may end up one place and they don't have the resources or they end up the other place and they have more. So is it going to take another year for you, for us to, for you all, for your staff to get a handle on what, what actually the district looks like?
No, what I was saying is how they use, like, we have our guaranteed viable curriculum that's happening in all of our buildings. And we have like the baseline resources, but so everybody has to collect MTSS data. In some systems, they, they may have the people who have the capacity that they don't need a person or they don't currently recognize that there is an advantage to having a person versus having their team or the administration or their instructional coaches doing that, pulling that data. And other places, they're saying, I'm going to have this one person to pull the data to drive the conversations versus having it be a joint collaborative thing. But what the kids have as far as access to the different interventions and that kind of thing, they all have the same access, but how they're carrying it out, it may look different as far as who's driving the conversation or who's the responsible party. What we will be able to learn from our data is those places that, let's say, the places that have the MTSS coordinator that drives the conversation, we see these huge gains in the other places we don't, or vice versa. We see the same amount of gains and we will be left to ask the question, does this, does this responsibility, should it be something that they're doing collaboratively? Or do they need this one person driving the conversation? It is not about like the resources now. Where we would look, there are some places that have more intervention teachers than others, but then we will be able to try to look at and compare that data as well. Does having more intervention teachers make a huge bit of difference? Or are we seeing the same results or is there no difference between whether you have an interventionist or not? Like, it'll help us to have those kind of conversations because the.
And we have had those conversations or we have not? I, I, help me understand, where are we in that continuum?
This, so this is, we have, we'll have one year of data this year and we'll be able to start to comparing this baseline year of data to as we progress monitor next year. So we're in the process of having those conversations.
Okay.
At the data.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Stubblefield, just one more thing as we're talking about like future. I think it will also help in the future to understand what positions were field versus not field. So we see the recommendations of, but if the positions were filled, as we're talking about like how the needle was moved, to me, it would be important to understand if those positions were filled because right now we're seeing recommendations, it sounds like some of them may be carryover from last year. And so was that person ever in place? And what did that do for the, for that school?
Yep, and that's the data we'll have to pull and share with you because in some cases they were, in some cases they weren't.
Yeah, and I know we're getting through it this year, but just thinking about next year as we're really diving into what this really looks like.
So this is Slago and they did their link to their report card too, so I'll go there really quickly. So level one and level two or the orange and red. So if you're adding them together, those are the total that did not meet the recommendation and ma, I mean, score above a level two or higher in math. Now, this is ELA. And science. I don't know, history and government didn't happen, so I shouldn't have put down that one. And then what they ask for and what they received are six title replacement teachers, a recovery room monitor. And we're looking at their staffing because their staffing was a little over what they were projected for, for students. So we're just trying to balance out with their schedule and make sure that they have the supports that they needed. So we'll evaluate that, we'll continue to evaluate that this year. And then Sumner. So Sumner would have eighth graders and then their sophomores and juniors. I don't know how they, well, they broke it down by the grade level, so eighth grade fifty-two percent. Two percent at level one and fifty percent at level two. Tenth grade, seven percent was at level one and fifty-one percent were at level two. And then eighth grade for, that was for ELA for math. Twenty-two percent at level one, forty-six percent at level two. And then twenty percent at level one at the tenth grade of fifty-one percent at level two. And they requested, what they received was five title replacement teachers, an additional instructional coach, an intervention teacher for the MTSS sit coordinator data. And then Washington, did I go past there up here? Their building report card. Again, the orange and yellow is the total and this is for math. ELA. Those are the two areas that are asked about on the needs assessment. And what Washington requested. Six title replacement teachers, a recovery room monitor, that's what they receive going into this year. And then Y and D. So they did the inverse, three percent met proficiency in ELA, so it'd have been ninety-seven percent. And then one point eight-three percent met it in math. And though that was their goal for movement. And what they, here's the additional request and adjustments that were made for them. Some of them we're still finalizing and cleaning up. Then I think the last, yeah, is Fairfax on? Does Fairfax, am I making this up? Does Fairfax have one? Anyone? Yep, here it is. They have sixty students. And they don't. Lisa Walker probably can answer this. Lisa, do they, how, do the Fairfax students tie back to their homeschool? Are they counted in those numbers or do they have their own building report card? Do you know, because they don't have any.
I, I believe, Dr. Stubblefield, they tie back to their homeschool, but we do track their graduation rate for that particular site.
Okay.
Internally.
So I have a question with that response. When we were going through the renaming process, we were told that Fairfax was was an actual high school assigned to Kansas City, Kansas. So I guess I'm a little confused how that works, how they're tied back to their high school. But we have to go through the accreditation, is Dr. Urban on here? I guess, how does that work?
So they, they, if you have a building number registered with KSTE, you're your own standalone, but how their assessments and things are recorded, it, because they do have a homeschool that they were actually assigned to, it may tie back to their homeschool for the purposes of not being able to identify the students. Because if you have sixty students and you have, let's say, ten sophomores and ten juniors, if you try to do a building report card, if you know who's at Fairfax, you can basically figure out who they are. So they probably put their numbers in with their homeschool to protect their identity.
But then they get a diploma from the actual Fairfax Learning Center?
Yeah. Because they are a building, they're, and I don't, and honestly, I don't know.
I guess I just don't understand how KSTE works around that and how that. We can come back to it later, but
Yeah.
I'm a little confused about that accreditation process and the model for that. And how we could grow the numbers for a number of students at Fairfax. But yet all of the data relates back to their homeschool, so then how? Okay, let me get my box together and I'll send you an email.
I, it's because of their size. So if they have, let's say Fairfax. So if they have, let's say Fairfax has all juniors and seniors, there's no one taking the tenth grade test. Like it, so some of it, it just comes down, if they were large enough to be distributed, I'm sure they could have one. Lisa, I think you were about to say something.
Well.
I would go, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say they do have their own building report card, but I do think there is a difference in how the assessment data is reported for just the reason that Dr. Stubblefield listed. But I, I will check into it and get more detailed information and get back with you on that.
Sounds good. I just wanna make sure we're clear and I appreciate you looking at that report card piece. Because I guess those are all of the pieces that I get confused on. It's, it has all of the things like a typical um high school. How um, how that data gets transformed? And maybe that's part of the transition from Green Bush to actually having actual teachers. Maybe that's part of that transition, trying to understand. So I can provide grace in that way. So thank you.
And then um. Lisa, did Fairfax have a staffing needs? I don't see them listed on this one, so I don't know if it got.
Yeah, they, they did not. And just uh, additional information, when you look at the school report card for those buildings, it, it does give the district numbers. And so um, we'll continue to get some more information on that. But I think the building needs assessment, I believe we interpreted that to be specific for comprehensive schools. So we did not um do one for all of the schools for Reach, Fairfax, K B C, Bridges and J F C.
Yeah, so Fairfax did fill out this form, but honestly Fairfax was birth based off, birth out of multiple building needs assessments. So that it's full, Fairfax is funded through our at-risk dollars, correct? And so that it, in that way, I'm sharing it here, but that's where it was, that's how it's funded um currently.
So then how did the staffing needs that are described in section two, how did those get addressed? By increasing the number of um at-risk dollars used at Fairfax or how does that get?
Yeah, that, that's how it would be addressed is reallocating at-risk dollars and then looking to see. Um, and in some ways, we, we could reallocate at-risk dollars if it was something that we could pay for out of ESER to, to collect the data around to know if that's something we wanted to do long-term is another way that it would be addressed.
But it's also depended on number of students enrolled, correct? Sorry.
Yeah, so currently they have like sixty and the principal would like to go up to eighty-five, which means that they would need an additional teacher. So we would, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And just to, to note, I wanna jump in right here. Students, um, they don't, a lot of students are not long-term at Fairfax. Some go to Fairfax and then they return to their homeschool. And so there is a process there.
That's very helpful. Thank you for adding that.
So though, so our next step regarding this part with the questions is we'll bring those questions and that information back to the board. Um, at the next board meeting, um, what we would do is bring like um the entire budget of, here's what our recommendation would be based off of all the different components um on the meeting on the thirtieth. The other item that was on there for today and then in between answer any questions or gather more information. The department budgets are there. I um don't necessarily have, um, I don't know what the board, I mean, my understanding was the board was going to review those. And then um, whatever questions may be, that maybe that will come up from those. I did just wanna point out um that under the department, the initial, initial department budgets that's in the folder was as of um April. We did update it um at the end of May, the, at the end of five thirty-one to show what the budgets were and where they were. Um, and we can um, at the thirtieth, it'll be cutting it a little close, but we can provide an update to in the July building, I mean, in the July budget meeting where they ended. If that is something the board would like. The other item that was on there today was the board's actual budget. Because there was um, I think the board wanted to have some discussion around that. So that was provided to the board as well. So I will have that, the other information at our next budget meeting. But those are all of the schools and their needs assessments and requests.
So I have two questions for you, please. Have you had a co- had the opportunity to have a conversation about um usage of at-risk dollars? With, with Craig, Newswonder, anybody at the State Department of Education?
I've been in general conversations around um usage of at-risk dollars and um the conversation around uh shifting them to more um research-based practices. Um, more so than um staff or having a, a general way to show the data um and what's happening with that, but not like individually just for K C K, no.
Okay, because their, their reporting requirements and I haven't, I, I haven't seen this. I haven't seen you all submit to us any of the reports, but I don't think that's a requirement. Any reports that go to K S D E that the board sees, that's number one. Uh, and number two, um, have you had an opportunity to identify any cost savings from each department's budget? And the reason I say that is because if we do nothing and you adopt the same budget because the U G has increased value, property valuation, the taxes will go up. And so with that in mind, um, I'm concerned about if we can, and you all are the numbers crunchers. You know, and, and we've already had the conversation about no, just blanket slice of, you know, cut two percent, five percent or whatever. But with that in mind, are, have you been able with your department heads identify some cost savings? So taxes will not increase?
So in order for the, so I think the, and if Tracy's on here or Brad or somebody could speak up. I think the, my understanding is the, what is the tax, the neutral revenue tax neutral will address that? Tracy, I see you, I'll let you speak to that. Go right ahead.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, the tax revenue neutral rate, um, we can stay within except for, of course, um, general fund, which is, you know, limited to twenty mils. But um Brad and I are going to the K S D budget workshop on the twentieth. And we will get all the information from K S D E um about, you know, any new law changes and things like that. And the um new budget documents will be coming out at the end of June. And so that's when we would like to be able to go ahead and start actually entering our data and then come back to the board and, and kinda show you some different scenarios of, this is what it would look like if we stay within the revenue neutral rate. Um, or if we would stay with the current assessed valuation. So that's information that we can bring to you, you know, early July.
Well, thank you, and that answers the, the global question because of talking tax rates. I'll circle back to you, Dr. Stubblefield. Have you had the opportunity before we have the opportunity to request, you know, specific um fine tuning of where there could be some cost savings by department? I mean, we're gonna work on our own board budget. But, but your department heads are, you know, we also with, you know, four votes say we recommend and we authorize you to reduce that line item by X, Y, Z. But I'm saying have, have the department heads been encouraged? And maybe I'm, and that someone, a few others are the only ones interested in reducing the budget. And I'm talking about numbers now, not talking about rates that Tracy and Brad deal with.
So what, unless I'm misunderstanding and Tracy and Brad can chime in. If we reduce the general budget, that will just go into, we would have to reduce the mill levy in order for the tax. Brad and Tracy, am I wrong?
No.
Okay.
No, you're not, you're not.
When it comes to.
I'm talking about if, if, just like the, the budget, if the, the board says, we're now gonna have a thirty-five thousand dollar budget. We're gonna have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget. That may be one penny that is not assessed, but this, I'm not talking rates. I'm talking about each departmental budget. Are there places where you can have some cost savings? Now, it'll trickle over into, you know, the end product, but that's what I was talking about. So we, we can continue this. Thank you.
So I will get clarification on that, but is there, I mean, absolutely, if the board wants the budget to be reduced, it can be reduced and we can, I can have each department. Um, I have not done that. Um, the, there were areas where there were natural cost savings, which in one of the documents that we shared with the board, I, we showed the overall savings and I think it was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars between um not renewings, a few contracts and um reduction of staff at central office. And so as those come up, we put it, those dollars in it, but they're just sitting there. So where I'm unclear and I can get with Tracy and Brad is when that happens, does that money need to go somewhere else? Because it's not really reducing the budget, it's just sitting there um or going to capital outlay or going towards raises or um increases like for di- different things. So that's where I, I will give more clarity before we come back on if all of these budgets are reduced. What needs to happen to that money in order for the taxpayers to see a reduction in taxes? And that's where I'm not clear, because my understanding is it would either go to like contingency or capital outlay. But I could be, unless you are overall not getting money from the state or wherever, it just.
Or it could go away.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And so the money, in order for the money to go away, what would need to happen, Tracy or Brad?
We, at the time that we published the formal budget, would have to lower the mill rate by how many mills the board would choose to. Um, at this time, we worked on a few projections for what that might look like. But I think Tracy is sharing with you um soon if she hasn't already. But uh, we won't really have a, a clear picture of that until we get those final uh budget documents from K S D E in very early July.
Brad, let me ask you that question again. If you're currently budgeting ten dollars at mill X and we come in then that we're only gonna need nine dollars, are you saying you had to reduce that mill levy?
Yes, because we don't control the valuation of the property in the county.
Right.
Just don't have any control over that, but the board can reduce the actual mill rate with a majority vote.
You had to reduce the mill rate because you're gonna have one dollar less in your total budget? You're reducing a mill rate?
If you're wanting to collect fewer dollars in L O B or capital outlay, then yes, you would have to reduce the mill rate. Because we don't control the valuation.
For one dollar?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think I, I will just say this, that I do think in preparation for bigger conversations that the board needs to have. If there are cost savings that we can have this year um to start to, to temperament that need to cut some of um the rate or the levy or whatever the bigger conversation needs to be. I think um if there is a pinch, potential to do that, I would be um someone who would be in favor of um those dollars going to capital outlay specifically around the conversations um of a field for Sumner or um a new building for Central Middle School um during this initial transition. The bigger conversation, I think, um, if we can start prep, preparing ourselves or getting the information available um for the board to look at some additional cuts and conversations we need to have in the upcoming future years. I, I think we have brought that up, that that probably is something that needs to go to the finance committee starting this um fall. Um, but that's, that's where I am with it. I, I agree with Dr. Wen that I think um we can't wait until something drastically happens that we're then forced in a, um, in a, in a tough spot. I think we uh should start um those considerations now.
And I would like to say one of the things that I think that we need to do, the board, is we should meet an executive session to discuss that before we start talking about it publicly to make a final decision as to which direction we're going to move in.
Yeah, if I could add, we, we will definitely have a presentation available for um any, you know, reduced costs that we have. Um, but then it would be up to the board's discretion on if that's going to go towards raises or if we're gonna make different changes. So um, we, we can put all that together though, so you guys have all the numbers in front of you.
Thank you, Tracy.
And, and thank you, but um Ms. Drew, unless you're talking about personnel, if it's generic board, I believe the statute requires it has to be publicly discussed. Now, I could be wrong and I stand to be corrected by Brad or Tracy or anybody else who knows. But if you're not identifying.
Yeah, unless it's personnel and when you start to, I mean, depending on where the cuts may be coming, it could be personnel. But that just would be a larger discussion that the board would have to have um at some point um in regards to what direction they would want to um go. And, and those are those bigger priorities around, what are the board's priorities and goals around, be it, as Rachel mentioned. Now, I will say Sumner Field, there's already ten million dollars in capital outlay. But as far as when um a new building for Central or facilities or those kind of things and looking at a capital outlay plan is the goal to reduce the budget to shift it over there. But if the larger goal is to reduce the taxes, that's reducing the mill levy, which is very different than shifting dollars so that the capital outlay, because that's not reducing the budget, that's just shifting the dollars to a different bucket. Um, which will not have an impact on taxes.
Right, but I'm saying in the initials, so that we don't have to go through that um process of changing the mill. If the idea is to start to lower the budget, then we can shift the dollars to this year. But with the expectation in the next two or three years, we will actually be lowering the mill levy. So those, that influx of dollars into capital outlay will not exist after two or three years or whatever Tracy and Brad share with us would make the most appropriate assent sense. That's not my expertise, so I'm kinda giving them my thought process, I guess, on a platter and saying, this is what I'm thinking, so.
And Ms. Drew, I think you were getting ready to say something as well.
You know, I was just thanking Dr. Wen for giving me clarity, making sure I understand it very clearly. Thank you, and Dr. Stubblefield as well.
Thank you. Okay, um, Dr. Stubblefield, anything else from, from your side?
No, we'll just have, um, in the next couple of meetings, we'll have that additional information. And once Brad and Tracy have the updated forms, they would bring that forward with whatever the options are.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Stubblefield, Ms. Paige, I have a question. Now, we've gone through the needs assessment and it's kinda disheartening to see that we're somewhere in the ninety percent of the whole student body is not proficient. So when we do these grade cards, do we send something out to the parents? Cause we gotta get the parents, all of us on the. All of us on the same page and fighting to do whatever we can to improve our scores. So do they get a report?
The parents do receive the student course uh, scores, but I will tell you that there's not a direct correlation between not being proficient. And not in having passing grades and or graduating with a diploma plus. So we share the full data with the parents. I mean, I guess the greater example would be if you look at Sumner and look at their graduation rate. And their, the success rate of those students who live there and or wind out any of our high schools. Is not ninety percent of our students don't go on to be product, productive citizens. So that's one data point. Now, can those scores be improved? Absolutely, but I don't think the scores tell a full picture of how our students perform. And how they um, proceed um, after high school. For a, a, a portion of them or maybe a, a large portion of them, yeah, so, but the parents do get it. But they also get the other additional information. What um, we will continue to do is to um, make um. Goals and strive ta- towards improving the scores. But um, there are other data points that um, demonstrate success for, I would say easily fifty. To sixty percent of our students that don't align with those who are um, who may receive a two on that.
I respect that, but you got a crew down in Topeka who are giving the money. And they base a lot of that on proficiency. So it, that sounds nice, but these are the people who are giving the money and they do base these scores. So we can't be naive to think that they're not looking at that, cause they look at that to a point. But when it comes to giving the money, that's what they're looking at.
Oh, I mean, I completely understand, but isn't, uh, what I'm saying is ninety percent of our students scoring. Not scoring above a two is not acceptable and we'll continue to shift that. But I don't think there will ever be, there's not a district in this state or anywhere. Where a hundred percent of their students are above that and there are other data points to success. So I think that you gotta tell the complete story, ninety percent is unacceptable, but realistically. Um, we can't sit here and say, well, all of our students will be at a hundred percent by this day. We have to continue to make strides to improve, which is what we're doing. But also, we also have to be able to produce other data that tells a different story about how our students and how successful they are. And those in Topeka and their perspective is just the reality that every district in this state is navigating. Um, because there's not a district that any of those who are using this to talk about how to fund schools. Um, will ever be open to uh, the other data points around that. So it, I understand what you're saying, but the reality of it is, we have to tell a complete picture.
So please confirm to me, the three things that the legislature is asking us to do. Is to review the needs assessment, to identify the barriers to why our kids cannot get to proficiency. And then to tell them when, how long it will take for them to get to be proficient. And, and I guess, all of that wraps into my third thought of, I heard what you said and I understand that. But it, and maybe Dr. Wen, will the interpretation of whatever our response for number three be? Be the thing that holds us liable in the future that we said. Well, in twenty twenty-two, you said this is what it's going to take for our kids to be proficient. You haven't met that outcome. Now, this. Um, what it, what is the interpretation of number three and the outcomes or the expected outcomes for the answer for that question?
You want me to respond to Dr. Stubblefield?
Uh, either of you, I, I'm kinda at a loss, just hearing.
Cause she's the.
I will tell you that. There, most superintendents in most school districts will share what I just said. Here is what we have, our goal will be to improve by ten percent every year. Here are the other data points that it'll be more around that. Because those kids that had that percentage in tenth grade at E L A, they never take the test again. They don't take a tenth grade E L A test ever again. So whether they move or not, you're not, you're looking at different students. So our, my response won't have an end date, it'll have, here's what our um. Cause, because I can't tell you what kids were testing every year. I'll be able to tell you what we're doing and how, what our plan is. And a lot of uh, and I will be able to say, you know, by twenty thirty-one, a hundred percent of our students who will graduate. Will graduate with a diploma plus, that has more indication of success than whether they have a two or a four on a state assessment. So can I ensure that a hundred percent of our students will have a diploma plus by twenty thirty-one? Yes, cause I, that's something that I can control. If they're graduating, we can make sure that they have a transition plan. Uh, college credit, they, some of them will score higher than the twenty-one, that they have some sort of like. Those are things that we can bu- build in and put in place, but I can't control how a student responds. Or show up on a day that they're taking an assessment. So I don't know how the legislature will look at that, I'll tell you ninety-nine percent of the district's responses will look just like the one I just shared. I can't think of a district that will put a end date on there similar to No Child Left Behind. Because we don't know what kids will be testing each year and every time you look at it, it's a different set of data. They're not, they don't look at it by this kid in third grade had a two and now they have a four. You're looking at a totally different group of students every year and what they're being assessed on. So it's not looking at growth over time, so that's the data that we see behind the scenes.
And I appreciate Dr. Stubblefield's honesty and, and one hundred percent of this. Two hundred and fifty-six school districts may respond as to that, but that is not what the, the law said that they're asking for. So. Whether or not one hundred percent graduate diploma plus. Congratulations, but that's not the answer and that's not what will be um, graded. If U S D five hundred responds like that. It's, it's, it's a, it's unfortunately, it's a catch twenty-two. These are anti-public school legislators who. Want vouchers, want to just take over and kill all public education. But in the attempt to save our district. The, the barriers, Dr. Stubblefield said, your, your building leaders will be able to identify those. They know those two hundred and thirty-five kids. The, the timeframe, we're talking perhaps, as you said, I think earlier. You may be able to see some movement in three years, you ca- you ca- you know. I don't know about you all, but I won't be here thirty-one, so I don't see it being a realistic response to respond. That in twenty thirty-one, no, you know, what, 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 what may happen in two to five years? But that, what concerns me is that, and I, and I'm sorry, I need more clarity and understanding. What does it take budget-wise? You, you're building leaders, you know, fine, you need one teacher, fine. I think Ms. Clark said, what is that teacher gonna do? You know, do we, do we need to, not so much give them more pencils and paper, but what digging deep in that budget does? Do, what do they actually need to move that needle? Because right now, we know Johnny in, in eighth grade is that Johnny. Now, we don't know what Johnny. In eighth grade next year is gonna look like, but we know what Johnny, that Johnny looks like. And that's all, I think Dr. Stubblefield said, we can address at those two to three-year plans, but that. Diploma, diploma plus, fine, we're glad we have it, but the legislature doesn't, will not respect it on that, on that report. Because it, it, it doesn't have anything to do with those state assessments, they realize. They're putting districts in a box specifically Wichita and K C K and, and I mean. I'm looking at a form that is given out that correctly, Dr. Stubblefield says, there's no district that is proficient. Fort Leavenworth, very small, level three and four is sixty-two point four percent. But they really enjoy the very last page of the zero to nine, Kansas City, the second from the bottom. How many are three and four percent? Seven point six five, we're right above liberal. So that's the kind of data that is, that is highlighted in Topeka. And, and that may or may not answer your question, Ms. Russell, but at the end of the day, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, Dr. Stubblefield knows, you may not be able to. Johnny may not even be there next year, but Johnny is there now. But if Johnny is there and what you know about Johnny, what is it gonna take to, to maybe move Johnny from? One to two. And if you move him to two, you've made some progress, but, but you never know what happens to Johnny that third or second year. But it's, 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 it's a very impossible task, they know it's impossible. But since we know it's impossible, then we can't play the game. You know, it's like, no, we're not playing the game, we're seriously looking at what is going to take Johnny to move. And that's what our job is at board to allocate the resources, and that's what I'm always saying, if it's the teacher, fine, if it's a secretary, I don't get it. But you explain what that secretary does, then maybe that secretary makes an impact. So that's my answer, Ms. Russell and board. And I respect your, your response, Dr. Stubblefield.
Alright, so uh, board, thank you for the conversation. I don't think that I'm missing any piece of today's meeting. Think we've all, we've covered everything, someone correct me.
Question for you, Ms. Clark.
Yes.
How, how are you and Mr. Lopez in, in um. Allowing us to provide input into the board budget? What process? I'm sorry, I, I need help to understand, do we submit suggestions to you all? What, what's the process of the board building its own budget? As departments go, how are we to submit information and data and request to you?
Okay, so uh, I am going to speak on behalf of Mr. Mr. Lopez, cause I'm looking more for him for that. And when you say the, you're talking about the actual board's budget, right?
Correct.
Okay, I would say send an email, Dr. Wen. Um, to, and you can send it to Randy, uh, Mr. Lopez, myself and, and Dr. Stubblefield. I'm, I'm flying off the cuff here, uh, and I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Lopez. So I would say send that and then I will also make sure he is aware, I can send him an email that we had this discussion. And make sure he is aware that those are the instructions that I provided.
Okay, man, because we have, I mean, we know Ms. Russell says she had conference requests. We all, I go to DC for the advocacy, uh, there's others who travel, I mean, what's the process we're using?
So I can, I mean, we can, if you want to dive into that a little bit today, we can definitely talk about the board's budget. I, I'm fine with that. Um, Dr. Stubblefield, I will look to you to help me as well a little bit here. I think there may have been a little bit of conversation, I'm not really sure. Uh, I know that I think the last couple of years, we haven't really used the budget because travel has been on, on hold. So there have been some recommendations that the board attend um, the, the national board.
School Board Association, so the board's budget is attached um, today, today's agenda. There are some pr- guidelines that are in the, outlined in the board handbook. I think what the um, board was going to discuss is. If, if the board was in agreement that the local K S B conference, all board members would have an opportunity to attend. And then the national conference um, that also would be an opportunity. And then if there was um, outside of like responsibilities, like the advocacy um, that Dr. Wen. And I think Ms. Drew has done based off of their affiliation with K S B. There may be one additional opportunity for some conference. It's something that I heard at a very high level at one of the other meetings, but I don't think that it was ever flushed out and decided upon. But I know that at one time was um, talked about, been discussed. And then I think at the time Greg was present and he said there are, if I remember right, that there were some guidelines in the board handbook. Which I don't have that in front of me, so I'm not sure. So Dr. Wen.
And then memberships, how are memberships handled? I think I mentioned that, asked you before, the institutional memberships or individual memberships? And maybe. Greg knows all that.
Yeah, Greg may, I mean, he may be familiar with that.
Okay.
I um, honestly, I'm not, I could um, Leslie, do you have the board handbook handy? And see that section?
So is it the board handbook or board policies? And I, and I, Leslie. So Leslie gave me those and none of those talk about conventions or conferences, the policies do. Um, those more or less talked about um, we would be a member of K S B. Um, and how and which we would be reimbursed for attending um. Uh, things on behalf, uh, as a board member. So how, how we would get paid back and what those receipts look like. Those were the two things that Greg mentioned related to policy, but none of them.
So in the handbook, does it outline anything there?
I would, I did not know about the handbook, I will try to pull that up um, here in a second.
It doesn't give a lot of detail and I, I thought today we were going to talk about that. And there's a list of things, when you look at the budget, that we need to decide. Cause it shouldn't be two people deciding for the whole group. I didn't say, Ms. Clark, you did, I'm just saying, it shouldn't be the president and the vice.
I think that's why it was on the agenda for today, like here is the budget and the board collectively as a whole. Has the right, like, this would be the space and the place to talk about it.
Yes, sorry. I guess my only other thought is, I, we have not seen anything from M V P. And I know I, I and another board member talked about actuals versus what is actually in the budget. But that, that to me is also a place that we could lower or have cost savings. Because fifty thousand of that, based on just conversations, not actual, Rachel has seen any. What we actually have paid um, at, in regards to legal fees. That is something that is, that seems like it's a placeholder there for an increase that the board may have had in the past. But we're not actually even spending that much. Um, so. I, I just wonder where all of those also side conversation items that I heard we were gonna get before we talked about these. But I don't, I haven't seen.
Well, I don't, so there, I think there were two different things. The, the contract around M V P and the adjustment and some of that thing, those things were. Um, discussed preliminary in executive session and then that was going to be brought back at another executive session. The general budget around travel and the processes around that. That this budget was added, there, your budget was added to the budget meeting. Because those are things you can talk about openly right now, I mean, you talk about whatever you choose to. But this, I think, was put on there more to really, I don't know what's in the handbook, I don't have uh, the hand. I don't even think I have access to the handbook, or maybe I do.
If you go to board docs, it's in there underneath.
Right, and I, so I just opened it, so I don't know what is uh, outlined around travel. And it may be something that you all, if it's not there, that's what you would need to come to some common agreements or, or around. I don't think it lies with the board president or vice president regardless who's in the seat. But I think it is something new for this, since this body of the board has been in place. Um, in regards to travel, but that's why it was put on there.
So we're not talking about the entire budget yet, we're just talking about the. Trying to find some consensus around out of district travel. And could someone also tell me what other expenses alludes to?
I will, I, I can provide a three-year um, you know, actual expense report. And then also give you details about what's included in the other, so I will give that to you and then.
And then also give you details about what's included in the other. So I will give that to you in the next day.
And there's two categories that at least that was sent to us. There's two or three, I know it's two, that says other. So what does that other? It's more than one other. And I thought, since we got thirty minutes left, we need to have some general discussion about what else is in that budget. Because we're not having a chance to decide and it's supposed to be our budget.
And I just want to clarify two things. You're absolutely right. I I am, no one set a budget for the board. So that needs to be level set from the very beginning. Uh, and then the second thing is, Ms. Drew, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I I'm in agreement with everything that's being said. Because I wasn't aware of a lot of the things that are listed there. What I would suggest that we could possibly do is to go ahead and. Itemize some things that we feel that we need to address. And then at our next meeting as well, to be able to talk specifically as to where. Or what we can do with the amount of money, how we're going to spend it, what things that we can do to try to enhance us as a school board to be able to. Make us the best that we're going to be. That's just my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. And so I realize we have thirty minutes. I am willing to do whatever the board wants to do, which is where I was going when I asked when I first opened my mouth. And said, board, what that that's exactly where I was going. I was not adjourning. I was asking the question. So if the board wants to have conversation today around the budget, that let's have the conversation. Where do we want it to go? How do we make that decision? That that is one hundred percent up to the board.
Can we start with Tracy? Am I putting you on the spot? If you walk us through just a quick generic of what each of these items is. Would that be helpful to all the board members to try to identify what actually we're talking about? In all of these line items?
Well, before she does that, the irony is that when Dr. Stubblefield asked, were we going to? San Diego, my response was we were never invited in the past to travel. So that that three-year um expense is is going to be interesting because and then. Maybe I would suggest maybe um after, in addition to what Tracy does. Ms. Clark, if if you have the capability of just just listing things that we haven't. Because training, I mean, how much has that been costing us? We don't have the numbers. That's that's the sad thing. We don't know what has been spent. Uh, we do know, we do know our travel. Again, do we, like you asked, Ms. Russell, do we house the total legal fees? Um, fine, if we house a total legal fees, we house them. I mean, and does it fall under board? And then we used to have um a line item for not only the board clerk, but also a deputy clerk. So there's, so there's some expenditures that we carried that we may or may not now, so. Go ahead. You're on, you're on screen, Tracy.
Okay, thank you. I will definitely get more detail to you. Um, I don't know that I can get it immediately. But I will break it down so that you can see exactly what has been spent and on what. Um, as far as the deputy clerk, that's always been absorbed within the um whatever budget houses that person. So in this circumstance, right now, it would be Dr. Stubblefield's budget. So the board has not charged anything for the deputy clerk duties. Um, but yeah, I can definitely get you, you know, the details. Um, as far as legal services. Their sound of what is the board's responsibility. Some of it might go to the library or special education, things like that. So when we receive the invoices. It is split out, so each department is paying for their own. But overall, the main legal services are are charged to the board's budget. So right now, for example, out of the three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred budgeted for this year. Uh, three hundred and eight thousand has been spent. But I can get you all that detail. It just would give me, just give me a little bit of time so I can uh make sure it's accurate.
Legal fees, because it looks like we, it just looked like we were paying the whole thing.
You're not, I mean, when special ed, if it's not related to board. Things like if it's special ed, special ed pays for it. But when you're talking about personnel, HR situation, which. May be directly related to something the board, it goes back to the board. So the nuance around that, we wouldn't necessarily be able to get into the detail because some of the examples may be identifiable. But we could talk about it in the executive executive session. But when it's something related to a special ed matter, that's not like. Directly related to the board, it comes out of their budget.
So can you also give us, what was it in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? And on on the average, what we pay?
Yes, absolutely.
Just just looking at what was tentatively on what he sent out to us today, it's gone up immensely. And I know there are more legal fees than what have you, but there ought to be a way to to see that, to see how much it normally goes up.
Yeah, absolutely. I will provide a three-year average of what's been budgeted, what's been spent. Give you detail on what that's included. So for example, the other um expenses right now. That included some student a month here or uh expenses, the KSB membership renewal. So I'll get all that detail put together for you. So you guys have a really clear picture of what's been um spent and expended over the last few years.
So Tracy, does KSB include our membership as well as board docs and and? Anything's paid to KSB?
I believe the KSB membership is just the membership and the legal, um, that extra legal um part of it. But I will look as to where where docs is being paid from.
Okay, and where does training come out of? Board training?
Board training probably would be held out of the out of district travel or any sort of travel expenses, but I will, I will get all that detail to you.
I'm sorry, the facilitator that we get from KSB and 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 you say you're going to get it and get, yes, Ms. Ms. Clark. These are the questions that somebody needs to to have some time to find the answers to. But the facilitator from KSB, where does that come? What what would that be? What line item would that fall under, Tracy? Would you know right out the bat?
That may, honestly, I can tell you probably other expenses if it's not covered in.
Okay.
It will be one of those, it'll be under other expenses if it's not covered under the membership. Any additional services or things that come from KSB that are above and beyond the. One, we just need to make sure we are accessing accessing KSB's full membership because there are certain things that are covered. I'm not sure. I, we may be doing that, but I'm not sure. But then anything that goes above and beyond that. Will come out of the other, because if you have the full membership, then that provide, that covers. Not only like board members, but it also gives um administrators access to certain trainings and things that are covered. And the, I can't think of the name. Don's on here, Don, if you can think of the name, there are different levels of membership. And I don't know which level we have.
Yeah, something about that all access pass. Don has mentioned that to me. Um, and I I, Dr. Wen, just off, when I'm looking at the budget, things like that would come under miscellaneous consultant. Um, because I'm also like, what is that? Um, and so, yeah, I will be really grateful for Tracy, um, once she sends that information along. So I really, really appreciate you doing that work for us.
And then we have two others. So what does one other cover? And then what does the other other cover? I'm just, just for clarity, I'm just curious.
As you should be, so.
Cube is a separate. Organization. Are there other organizations that we should? They they come under NSBA, but they're they're separate membership costs.
Yeah, and I don't know if now is the time, but I was going to. As and I kind of thought Greg was going to bring up the policies. Um, to review those and maybe weed those out a little bit more so that it is very clear. Because when you say because we're members to KSB, which then somehow relates to NSBA. It alludes because Co- Cube is a part of, is a branch of NSBA. That it would be fine to be a part of that membership, but I think it should be explicit in our policy that we are members of this, this and this. Each board member can attend this, this and this with the, I think we should do some policy work. So that the people that come there after us have a clear understanding and they're not in this moment of where we are. Of just like, what was done in the past? Where does it go? What? How how much do we allow? I think that's where we could do some policy work related to our internal budget. Um, to ensure that um people after us are not in the same boat of what is going on, so.
I'm on board for anything that will help with historical, because that, I mean, some of this stuff, I've questioned, like, where is there? Why are we just talking about this now when our district has been in place for forever? So I'm definitely in favor of anything we can do to help for future.
Good afternoon. This is uh Terry Safely. And I apologize, I'm not up to speed on on some of these issues, but I will make sure Greg should be. Should have landed his flight by now and I will make a list of these comments for him. So at your next meeting, he will be able to perhaps provide you some more information. And certainly be available to uh Dr. Stubblefield and Ms. Clark and Mr. Lopez. To fill in any questions he can for them uh to prepare you uh information for the board.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I was gonna say shame on Greg for taking a vacation to see his child graduate while we talk about board budgets. No, just kidding.
Well, I can tell you, based on the phone conversations, he was definitely doing work while he was out on the West Coast. Because he was.
Hopefully it had some beaches in there.
All right, so board, there's lots of questions. I want to make sure that we are aligned on next steps or where we are or where we in today. So all six of us are here. What is that? What does that look like?
Well, if Tracy goes back and kind of gives us the show what each category represents. And then we as a board, because I know when we did the last one with myself and Mr. Lopez. I'm gonna be honest, it was just the two of us. So we want to be fair, it should be all of us. And everybody should have a say and know what's going on. And as a group, decide, once we get the information about each category and what that covers. Then come back together and decide how much we want to allot to each one. And then as a board, because we're the board, they keep saying we're the board and the board needs to decide.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Page. So our next meeting is on the thirtieth, if my memory serves me correctly. Um, it sounds like um Tracy, you'll get that information out to us. The board will have a chance to review. The board will also have a chance in between to ask any questions and then this will be one of the conversation pieces for the thirtieth. Are we aligned?
I would also suggest that, for example. If Ms., I'll use Ms. Russell's example, if she. Wants to submit travel to Orlando, then do some preliminary cost estimate. Or that, what is, you know, I'll look up what the membership for of for Cube is per year. I mean, we need some numbers. Um, I'll even step on Ms. Smith's toes. Um, if there is, if it does, if clerk training, because when you go on KSB's webpage. Clerk training says something like seventy-five dollars. Well, are we responsible for that seventy-five dollars? Or does that come in the all package pass? So those kind of details, we need to build our budget. In my opinion.
So just for me, for clarity, when it comes to KSB and what's included, and we may have talked about it and I may have missed it. Who's going to get that clarification as far as what is included in our membership?
I can get it.
Okay.
I can get the uh what's, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can ask. Well, Leslie or whomever pays the invoice will know if we have all access, but I think if we have all access, what's included in all access? My understanding is when you have all access, all of those trainings for board clerk are included in it. Things that are typically not included in all access. Um, or things that don't happen on a regular basis, because any training, if you have all access, if they offer something for administrators. Any administrator in the district could attend because we have all access and they're an administrator of a district with all access.
Then Ms. Clark, you'll you'll need to provide the amounts we are paying to Marsha, because you and Mr. Lopez are arranging those things. We don't, we don't know those, those amounts. If they are not covered by the all access pass, those are special events, aren't they?
Yeah, and Dr. Wen, I just, to your regard around, you know, travel and those types of things. I want to be careful that we don't um correlate those things specifically to how much they cost. Um, because that will vary depending on the location of each event. So if I, I can go and look at the cost of what it costs to go to Orlando. Um, but I just want to be careful, we don't build the budget that way, because then it won't allow for the variations in the future. Where things may be costly.
We only deal with one-year budget. So all I can say is.
Okay, I get what, I guess I was coming from a policy level, like the clarity around that of like what we are allowing. Because where you go may be different than where I go.
True, but every year, somebody from KSB, but somebody like Ms. Drew, myself. Being on the legislative committee, being on the, maybe even Ms. Humphreys, being on the nominating committee, being on the uh board. Advocacy, that is a, that is an opportunity annually.
Okay.
One, it's always in DC. Two, the costs are going to be out of this world year after next. But but there's, there's like two, two trails going here, two silos. One, yes. If you're a member of Cube, if we're a member of NSBA, it's in uh. Kalamazoo, Michigan next year. It's only an estimate. It was in, uh, but the advocacy is always in DC. That's always going to be a high, high dollar ticket. But and even the, I mean, yeah, there's categories, there's policy, but there's also for this year's budget specifics.
You just want, okay.
So that.
I'm with you.
So that we we just budget either enough or if it's going to cost too much, we cut back, one to two.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay, um, I just outlined expectations and then I added on, Dr. Wen, your last comment about uh Marsha. And the training that she's been, that she did. Is there anything else? That is being.
So from the policy level, what should I do?
I think we have two people talking, um, Ms. Paige and Ms. Russell.
What about the other young lady that's coming in? How much are we paying her?
Dion King.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And then my question was around policy. What should those, I'm happy to champion that work. But what should my next steps, should I email Greg and you and you and Randy and talk about potential? Opportunities to bring to the board or potential, like how should we address those historical? Next pieces till while we're doing this?
What are you talking about?
So changes to the board policy, so under policy BBF reimbursement for expenses. And memberships, which is BK, which. No, that's boards, BG. I would like to have the memberships, if we're going to be members of Cube, that it's written into policy. So then it's clear what that that transaction is and why it's in the budget.
Hmm.
So I would.
I'll follow back. Do you want to be that specific?
That's what I was going to say. You can say um a local and national or whatever. Because if Cube changes their name to Ru.
Okay.
You will be constantly changing.
Or Cube may dissolve.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
More like state, national. I don't know, there are no local associations that we belong to, are there? About Stubblefield? KSB is state, so state and national.
State and national, they're made, sometimes they're regional organizations like.
Yeah.
Larger states, I don't know if we have any regional.
So the way I translated what Greg told me about memberships is it's based on this board sentence, and that's why I thought we needed to update the board policy. Because he said, in order to join Cube, I'd have to refer to policy BG. And I'm not sure how else to put that in there, but I can circle.
Why don't you, in my opinion, why don't you send? Randy and Yolanda sent out the board policy, and we all discuss it. Because I find it, I I find it interesting, and I would I would challenge that you would, we would want the policy to say, you, we want to join you. I I I find that interesting.
Okay, I I mean, I I definitely think there needs to be a discussion around what that what that looks like. I also think that we need, we don't really know what that should look like in the future based upon even the last couple of years. So before we start touching the policy, I think we definitely need to kind of solidify where we are now. Okay. I want to make sure I've left nothing unturned. Okay, hearing, hearing silence.
How early do you want the information submitted to you and you submit it back to us?
So the questions that I have, well, I want to make sure of what I, I mean, what I have down for me is to get information about Dion King, to get information about Marcia, and to get out the policies. That's what I have down as my action items.
And we have action items to send to the generic list. And when will Tracy get us the generic three year history?
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure when you said send to me. I wanted to make sure we were on the same page. So Tracy?
Yeah, I can have those to you tomorrow. I'll get the detail tomorrow.
And then in order for you to be prepared, Tracy, you want your questions, any questions you want them to come back to you by when?
Well, this has been very helpful. This is kind of the discussion I was hoping for so that I would know what information you guys wanted. But after I send it out to you, then you can just let me know. If we won't bring this back until June thirtieth, then you have plenty of time to give me, you know, responses or any additional information you'd like.
Okay, so I'm gonna help you by putting a date on this. You, so you're saying you'll get this out by tomorrow. Tomorrow is the fourteenth. Are, can board, can we get questions back to Tracy no later than the twentieth? That gives you, that gives you to the Monday? Okay, I'm seeing one head nod, Ms. Russell.
When do our lists go to you and you make the generic list up of what we will discuss?
When does your list go to me and I make the generic list up? Are you talking about the next agenda for the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking travel, we're talking this, we're talking that. We needed you and Randy to receive that to put on our agenda. Maybe we'll ask Tracy a figure, maybe we don't. But you are the, you're the holder of the of the list. You're the holder of the agenda.
Okay, all right, let me finish. Dr. Nguyen, maybe maybe your mind is moving faster than mine. Let me finish what I'm thinking here at a time. So Tracy, we will get you, any questions back to you by the twentieth so that you can get those.
So can we do the twenty second? Because we're talking about the meeting on the thirtieth, correct?
That is correct, and I want to give her time for the back and forth that I know will take place between board members.
Okay, I I personally, and I'm just speaking for myself, I will not be able to get to whatever Tracy sends until Monday. And so I am asking that we go, if it works for Tracy, to go to the twenty second, I just don't want to send a lot of the lists after the twenty second. But maybe it's the twentieth with knowing Rachel won't get to it till the twenty second. I'm happy to do that as well, but I also just want to be upfront that I don't, I can't make a time commitment by the twentieth to get that done.
Okay, so I think we have enough other voices that if we can get those questions over to get them answered, then then yes, then we have yours. Dr. Nguyen, I don't know if you were implying that those questions all come to me and I be the facilitator of that back and forth?
Well, I'm not even talking about a question. I'm just saying, I can, if if I'm submitting a travel suggestion for the advocacy institute and estimated cost, that's not going to Tracy, that's going to you.
Okay, so we were talking two different things, which is what I, why I paused that conversation to make sure that we were aligned. So right now, we've talked about the questions that are going to Tracy. We've talked about a turnaround time, and we understand that. So now we're moving into, board members want to travel, they need answers before the thirtieth. So before the decision has been made by the board on how travel travel should take place. I'm sorry, I I have not had that conversation.
And I'm and I'm sorry, I don't even, I'm not even saying that's specific. That will include that. I'm saying you know, a suggestion for, in, well, put it like this, when we get the categories from Tracy, we'll know, membership dues, staff, other and other. I plan on sending to you and Randy and the rest of us suggestions for training, travel, membership dues, X, Y, Z, to you and Randy and the board.
I'm with you. Thank you.
I will have as many cost estimates related to that that I can find, and I would suggest others too.
Okay, thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, Tracy's job is put in the category.
I am one hundred percent with you. So are we, wasn't agreed upon date to get those in? Are we thinking the twenty? Because we already are saying, okay, on the twentieth, we'll get this in. We understand Ms. Russell's situation.
Tracy said the twenty second works for her. Her computer shut down and she's trying to get back in. But she just texted me and said the twenty second could be the deadline for everybody, and that will be enough turnaround time.
Okay, so do we want one deadline for all of, for everything? Does that help our brains? It helps my brain, so the twenty second.
Yes, because I think I was actually talking about what Dr. Nguyen was talking about versus the actual Tracy thing. So yes, I think that works great.
All right, so we have, we have two things that are happening here. We have questions that are going to Tracy. We also have recommendations that are coming from the board as far as what should be included in the budget. And we're saying that the twenty second will be the deadline to get those in.
Yes.
All right.
And I have one question, or rather, one concern. I know that we do travel to those various things, but I think it would be good if we could do a presentation at a board meeting after we have gone on one of those trips so that the public will know where we have gone, what we've done, what we've learned, so that we are not just spending the money, but we are having accountability for what we are doing.
And I'd like to add to that, the last session I attended was the Proud Academy. Never had an opportunity to perhaps suggest we incorporate in the budget. Here we're talking about a budget process. Never have had the opportunity to incorporate some of those small little strategies that could improve student outcome. So I wholly agree with you, Ms. Ms. Drew.
Yeah, and I, but Dr. Nguyen, I think during these budget conversations, when we are saying, here's what we're doing, I don't know if that's the space to say, have we considered this? But I also think one of the things that collectively we're gonna have to do is prioritize what kind of reports the board is wanting, when they want them, and when would the board share these types of things? Because what is, as we are planning, like in our organizational meeting on July seventeen, we probably, it will be helpful to know and understand what that looks like so that certain agendas are not so full. Because we have, we've planned for this, and then we add all of these things. So forecasting out, like on this meeting, these four meetings, this, after board travel or whatever, the board will have this for updates or something else. So we're not planning something like a report that takes like an hour to forty five minutes that have outside guests. So we can make the proper adjustments and plan around that. I think that will be helpful. And then to know it, like, what are those things that the board wants a verbal report on? And what are those things that we can possibly submit a written report on? So that the board has the update information, and it could be a part of the board agenda. But that'll help us in planning for next year. Because I think what has happened this year, we've been very, or at least I I feel like I've been very reactive to like, oh, this is coming up, this. But if we can plan it ahead of time, I think it'll help all of us and honor all of the time of everyone and not, you know, be in a space that like nine o'clock that we're presenting some information that's important, but people have been in a meeting since four o'clock, so it's hard to focus.
Yes.
All right, board, it is five o'clock, five oh one, to be honest. Are we missing anything?
The only thing I would add, Lisa said in her comments, I was incorrect, the graduation rates are reported for Fairfax and Reach five hundred. So they have their own thing, but I think it's the state assessments that may be embedded in other schools just because of the identifiable component.
Okay. All right, if nothing has been missed, board, just a reminder, we do have a meeting, a board meeting tomorrow that starts at four thirty. And if nothing else has been missed, this board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.